This time, I'll call the Hamilton County Council meeting to order. Madam Auditor, would you please do a roll call?
Brad Weaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Here.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a form.
Thank you, Madam Auditor. The invocation and pledge allegiance by Council Masalomani, if you all please rise.
Bow your heads and please pray in your own way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's had a chance to review and read the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to public comments. Anybody here with public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee and officer reports. The first one is the President. I have none. Vice President?
I have a quick one. As Council nominated me to be representing the Council on the Baker's Corner RFQ/RFP review, just wanted to give you kind of an update on where that is. And I know Connor Sullivan's here as well, if we need to have any other questions about the process. But so, proposals for US 31 corridor water and wastewater infrastructure investment project were due by noon on Friday, April 22nd. The county received seven proposals overall. From our initial review, four of the proposals are from developers. Two proposals are for contract operations. And one proposal is for contract management. The four proposals received from developers are BMW Development, BW Development out of Fishes, Indiana, Coco Seating Industrial, Inc. out of Greenfield, Indiana, Reynolds Construction of Carmel, Indiana, Thienamen Construction out of Westfield. The two proposals received for contract operations were for Citizens Energy Group Indianapolis, Indiana, Trico Regional Sewer Utility out of Zeinsville. And the one proposal received for contract management is from BCM Management out of Roanoke, Indiana. The proposals were packaged and provided to each member of the scoring committee for them to begin their review. The remaining hard copies are on file at our Carmel office, and this is from Russell Engineering, who was overseeing the process. We can also distribute electronic versions of each proposal, and I think they're available for your review as well. Just to kind of give you where that thing stands, we met several times. And latest, we had interviews today with two of the prospective groups. Connor, is there anything else you want to?
No, I guess it pretty much sums it up. I have no questions right there.
So if you have any questions, I believe we're going to be making a recommendation based on the scoring to the commissioners. And as soon as that's sort of made public, I'll certainly share that with the council.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the homework there. Moving on to highway.
But we met, but no, we discussed later in the agenda.
I know one item just for everyone's knowledge, Brad, 141st and State Road 37 bids tomorrow, correct?
Right.
So just want to keep that, everyone when you go home tonight, say a prayer.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, moving on. Finance Committee.
We did meet with Reuter and reviewed all the stuff that was discussed at the joint meeting. We discussed that with Reuter. He was brought up to date. I would advise you, if you want to go in depth, read the minutes from the finance meeting, because we go line item by line item. But what I will tell you is that we got a handle on most of it, and we're going to meet with Reuter again to refine it down even further. But if you want the minutia, read the finance committee meeting minutes.
Okay. Personnel, we did not meet. Miscellaneous.
I have a question.
Nothing? Okay, we'll move on. Any unfinished business, table business? We will move on to new business. The A on your agenda, B, approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the grant appropriation. The first one is Fund 8221 FWHA reimbursement fund appropriation is $4,778.05.
Mr. President, would it be if I make a motion to combine items one through four under the grant appropriation? Is there anybody that would see?
Second.
Moved and seconded to include one through four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now I'll make a motion to approve one through four under grant appropriation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item C on your agenda, the 2023 budget instructions.
Okay, Ken, you want to take the? We talked about this at finance meeting. Our general recommendation is that we follow the whistedy, move up one step, and leave it at that. And if there's going to be any changes, we'll do it at budget hearing. But that will go out with the budget instructions.
The second item, that's exactly right. And the second item I would just say, want to bring to people's attention, is that we know that there's been a lot of maintenance and other things that are brought forward to us on a regular basis. What we've asked is that we look at the departments to come forward with plans that they have to spend dollars from a maintenance or equipment obsolescence strategy and budget those dollars in budget hearings for 2023. And if they are bringing increases to those line items, that they would do so with a opulence management plan for that, or maintenance plan for that. So that's also in the budget instructions. You might see that new language in there. I think that, Sue, you had something else you want to add.
The other thing is, every year, we go through the nonprofit grant process, and it's cumbersome at best. This year, we're going to be tweaking it a little bit. We are going to ask that the nonprofits out in the community who wish to apply for grant dollars from the county, apply with the application that managed through Dan Stevens with the Commissioner's office, and they will be due the third Monday of June going forward. Then our committee, and this has been tweaked a little bit, is that we are going to have a subcommittee of council members and other key individuals within the county who will review those grant applications and do the interviews individually, instead of having them come in front of the full council during budget hearings. And then what we will do then is that committee will have a recommendation list to the full council of everyone who has applied and whether the committee recommends funding and to what and how much. And then the full council can approve or not all of those individual grant applications. And so we are going to do that this year, and you'll get more information out there.
Sue, for clarification, the recommendation would be, recommendation and that any people that maybe were not part of that recommendation would still be voted on by the full council, correct?
Yes, they will have a list.
At budget hearing, we won't have the individual groups in front of us. They'll already have been in front of the committee. We'll have a list. Some of them have a favorable recommendation, some of them will have none, but we'll have a list. Council members will vote on every request.
That is such an amazing idea.
The one piece.
Wow.
The one piece that...
It's from all, talking through all of you, so this is...
That's a great idea.
Oh, yeah. And Sue didn't mention the ones that are statutory are not in there. They're taken completely out.
Thank you.
And then I know that there was discussion about those that maybe had received funding this year, that we anticipate that they would issue a full report. Otherwise, they would likely be exempt then from next year, because they have to provide that information.
Going forward, every grant recipient, as part of the grant requirements, is to submit a report of what they did with the money. And if they fail to do that by August of the year, after they receive the money or got the appropriation for it or acknowledgement of it, then they will be ineligible to apply again. So there'll be like a year delay, but that we are requiring a write-up of what they did with the money.
Are we still looking at percentage of operating budget, so we're not funding out versions? I believe the application has been unchanged since the last...
Yes, yes. And in talking with all of you, that they wanted some flexibility, because we didn't want anything carved in stone with regards to what the size of the grant, although there was a lot of expression to keep it a lower dollar amount per organization, but we didn't want our hands tied should some worthy organization or project come before us. The other thing is that we will... What was your question? I'm so sorry.
Just, I just...
A specific dollar.
Yeah, because I mean...
That's where I was going with the dollar.
Specific dollar amount, as a percentage of operating budget. Because I think there's a few of them that are operating specifically with government dollars, meaning that they become almost like a de facto county agency.
And we asked all of you, the operations, we wanted to be flexible, so there's no requirement of a specific dollar amount, but we will consider that in the committee. And anybody who wants to serve on the committee is welcome to do so.
And if I could just add to that, Fred, you know, this has been three years in the making, as you know. I think part of the process, and Sue deserves all the credit for getting this across the finish line, but as we, you know, as we look at the things, the application will ask information about what the dollars used for, but I think what you're going to get the biggest information from is the report at the end of the year, saying what was this used for. And so I think that we're not going to probably have that information readily available that first year, but that second year, when we start getting information about what's going in, it'll allow us to be a little bit more informed about the exact dollars and what the uses are going forward. Is that fair?
Any other? Sue, I'd like to first want to thank you for all your extra effort getting these nonprofits organized, so thank you. And at this time, item 10 on your agenda, at the bottom of the page, it's additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. At this time, I would open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. And starting with the first one, it's item A. It's Fund 1,000. County General is requesting $4,244,464.
It's advertised in two places.
We have a, Brad, we have a motion to approve before we can talk about it.
Are we jumping down to A1? Or you want them all together?
They're advertised in two places, correct?
Right, they're advertised in two places.
The bill's out there.
Yeah, so...
So here's my question, if we're at number one?
Do we, I think, do we have to have a motion to?
Yeah.
So I put a motion, we have a second, that we can turn it down, and then we can talk about it.
Okay, are we A or one through four?
I think we're just doing...
This is the one.
Okay, all right, second.
A, I'm sorry, A1.
Brad, I know you're going to say it's good.
This is to the auditor. As it applies to the different requirements the State Board of the Council has put on you, is there any difference as far as where our income tax funds are between rainy day and general fund going forward? I want to preserve all the money that can be used for roads. Is there one account? I know we can't build roads out of County General, what about rainy day?
I don't think we...
Are they mingled in rainy day?
Rainy day can be used for anything.
Yes, so pull it out of general.
Okay, all right. So what I would suggest is that we fund, we've already agreed to fund, I suggest we fund this out of County General.
I would agree.
I would agree.
Okay. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's on our agenda in two different places, so we could go with either fund. This is just the first one that came up.
My, it's, we advertise it in two places so that we can have the flexibility going to this meeting to make sure we can make a decision and move forward, based on that recommendation, and my, what's already a motion to approve. I guess, do we have any other comments we will make?
This time, call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we do not need to address B?
I am B1.
Okay, moving on, so there's no confusion. Fund 4594, 276th Street, Tifft District requesting...
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A2 through four.
Sorry about that. A2 through four. It's the assessor, it's a 144 amendment.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's an addition on here from commissioners. It's $44,463.50.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those...
Hold on a second, real quick.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, this is the...
ARPA.
ARPA.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
No, nay, for the record.
Okay. One opposed. And item...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
This is the ARPA...
Oh, I'm sorry. I switch, I did not realize that. Mine is nay also.
Okay.
Okay, so this is for the directive that...
We reimburse.
The elected official salary has to be reimbursed to the ARPA fund.
Yes.
From County General. So we have five and one, and you two are...
Nay.
Nay, right? Okay.
It'd be great to, you know, be let in on this little secret down at the end there.
I've said in almost all the ARPA meetings, it's ugly.
Is it?
Oh, God.
The EMA 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item B. Do we need to read this one as well?
We should be at B2, right? B1 is...
No, B1 is struck from the agenda, so we move on to two.
Thank you. It's 276th Street project, and they're requesting $607,245.23.
Motion to approve.
There you go.
Second.
We need to...
Robinette, is this number correct even after the, and that's one we've got some...
Yes, so this number is correct, because you are getting ready to approve the 1.3 million from ARPA funding.
We got a big chunk of that paid for, the 276th project, out of the ARPA fund.
Yes, that's, as it's broken down, this is to pay out with some gymnastics with some other funds to pay out the project.
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to State Road 37 project. There's a request for $2,700,000.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
No.
One against?
One against.
Moving on to item C on your agenda. It's Fund 4594. It's 276th Street, Tifft, requesting $857,300.
So moved.
It's actually 857,299.88.
299, uh, 299.84?
88, 88.
Oh, okay.
I still move.
A second.
Make a motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Highway special, Fund 4907 Highway Special is $9,300,000.
Highway Committee also moved.
Second.
Thank you.
What are we getting for our nine million?
This is the, this is the other 12. It was 12.7 for the over. This is just, we've already set that money aside. This is appropriating it so it can be spent if it comes to a bid day.
Appropriating what we've already set aside.
Yes, and so that 2.7 that we approved prior and this 9.3...
And Brad, as I can speak, I think, on behalf of the entire Highway Department or Highway Committee, no one's happy about this. That would be an understatement. I think everyone knows how I feel about this. We're in a bad situation, as is anyone building anything right now, and we're hopeful that bids come in tomorrow, you know, in a good place, where we don't have to come back again.
Are you hoping the bleeding ends right here? It's not gonna end.
My hope is that there's discussions potentially with the state to maybe help us a little bit more.
You would hope in one hand and...
You know, hey, at the end of the day, the question should be asked, though. That's my, that's my argument, is why the question has not been asked or brought forth. So that's something I'm looking at.
It's, you know, just as someone that lives in this world, every once in a while, we've seen 12% escalation in construction just this year alone. That's, that is a huge number, and we recognize and have identified how much of that is included in this, in this project. We have made accommodations to put in contingencies in place to cover it, but at the end of the day, on bid day, we find out what it really costs.
And bid day's tomorrow?
Bid day is tomorrow. What's what time, Brad?
I really don't know what time. Usually they do it in the mornings.
Yeah, so...
Okay, we have a...
Could I, I think you have a motion, a second?
We do.
Don and I were talking, and we talked at lunch today, that this number's actually And we've talked with Brad Davis, and he knows he has to find the difference to make that, the whole 9.3, and then this totally takes care of all the funds in 4907. So you've maxed out that fund, so...
So that's zeroed out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
One opposed? Moving on, there's a 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on on your agenda to item E, it's Fund 8275,93.354. It's workforce development coag grant. It's a 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we're going to move on to F on your agenda, and these are all for ARPA fundings. It's Fund 8950, ARPA. Do you want to do one at a time?
No, unless anybody has some questions, I would make a motion, we include one through four.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the ARPA funds.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G on your agenda, it's Fund 9138, Roy and Ruby Johnson. It's K-9 requesting $5,210.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item H, it's Fund 9159, K-9, that's Ken, I need help pronouncing this, maybe, Gauz?
Yes.
Gauz, okay. Requesting $10,000, and the amount available for the appropriation is $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
I have a question. Both of these funds are directly for K-9s for the sheriff's.
They are.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 11 on your agenda, announcements.
Mr. President, we close the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. This time, I will move to close the public hearing, and we will move on to announcements. Sheriff, Captain Ireland is here this evening.
The sheriff has.
I'm sorry?
We have no announcements.
Okay, thank you so much. Council Attorney?
No announcements, other than I did confirm that you can use the rainy day fund for anything.
Do what?
You can use the rainy day fund for anything.
Okay.
Thank you. And Madam Auditor?
I have nothing. Mike?
Okay. Thank you all for your attendance, and at this time, I will adjourn our meeting.